Council conference room for a briefing to discuss tonight's agenda. Now at five thirty, we moved here to the first floor chambers to conduct the council meeting in person. And because we encourage community involvement, we invite the public to join us in person or participate via a remote option through Zoom review on BCAT. For anyone who is attending in person and plans to comment tonight, please print your name clearly on the sign in sheet, which is on the back of the room. So your name will be included in the meeting record. For more information, please refer to the public recognition, the public comment process, comment sheet, which is also in the back of the room on the entrance table. We have no council members participating via Zoom. Council member Mokler will be absent tonight. With the housekeeping in order now, we'll turn to our mayor, Mayor Wheeler for the mayor's report. Welcome, Mayor.
All right, welcome, Council President. Good to see you, councilors. A couple of slides for you. Beautify Bremerton day is coming up, but first we're going to start with the consumer report, and it's not consumer affairs, okay? Consumer Affairs Report, consumerfairs.com. Bremerton was just ranked as the number two coastal city in their publication out of one hundred and forty-eight beach communities. So you can see up there affordability, livability, safety and economy. We're all, we're all factors for consideration. One of the, one of the elements that we, we had that was highlighted, seventy-four percent of the residents living in within a ten-minute walk of a park or green space. Things we know to be a fact and to be true for the most part are, have been recognized in a publication. So I just thought I'd share this with you. We are all aware of the quality of life we, we do get to enjoy in our community, and I know we, we value it tremendously. Beautify Bremerton, so annual event. I've been receiving feedback and hopeful feedback from individuals that we would continue this. And kind of goes into the why we're such a livable city. We have events and programs like this where we do a, a citywide cleanup once a year. And so as you can see, September thirteenth, eight AM to two PM. There's more details. There's a website at the bottom that you can access and a phone number for information. The Naval Avenue First to Fifteenth Project, Bicycle Pedestrian Enhancements, Open House, September eighteenth from five PM to seven at the Naval Avenue Elementary School. So this is Naval Avenue First Fifteenth Project, so just get that on your radar. I'll go back just real quick. And I just want to make sure everybody who's watching this in the, in the audience or on television can just kind of get some information here. Again, this is the Naval Avenue First Fifteenth Project, five to seven PM, open house. And you can see at the purpose of it down below, design features will be highlighted, of course. And just communication of the project history. I'll, I'll see you all there. All right, next slide now. Thanks. All right, and here's another upcoming open house. Now this is for the Sixth Street Active Transportation Improvement Project. Coming soon to September thirtieth, again, five to seven PM. This one will be at the Norm Dick's Government Center. So we, as many people already know in the city, and I am speaking the obvious, we have a, a focus on creating multimodal transportation infrastructure. It's been ongoing. It continues to be things that we consider valuable. And look for that, look for more of these projects in the future. So hope to see folks at one of these two infrastructure, open house projects. And that's it tonight. That concludes my report, Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Now I'll turn to our city clerk, Ms. Hoover, for the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Younger. On the, excuse me, for approval on the consent agenda are the following items. A, claims and check register, approval of the following checks and electronic fund transfers. One, check numbers four, one, two, zero, four, seven through four, one, two, two, four, two. And EFT numbers V four, four, two, nine, eight through V four, four, three, nine, one. And the grand total amount of two million, eight hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. Two, regular payroll for pay period ending August fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the amount of one million, one hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. Three, regular payroll payout for the pay period ending August fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the amount of eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty-two cents. Four, regular payroll correction for the pay period ending August fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the amount of two thousand, twenty-five dollars and seventy cents. Five, retiree payroll for pay period ending August thirty-fifth, thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and the amount of thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. B, minutes of council meeting, August twentieth, twenty twenty-five. C, minutes of study session, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. D, resolution number three, four, zero, two, to establish October first, twenty twenty-five as a public hearing date for the vacation of right-of-way on Twenty-Sixth Street, west of Finney Bay Drive. E, resolution number three, four, zero, three, to establish October first, twenty twenty-five as a public hearing date for the vacation of the alley located between Fifth and Sixth Streets, west of Venita, Venita Avenue. F, approve upgrade of budget analyst to budget manager and approve salary at pay band fourteen of the management professional confidential and fiduciary salary plan. And G, approve human resources director's salary at pay band twenty-one of the management professional confidential and fiduciary salary plan and approve job description. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. If any member of the public wishes to speak to any of the consent agenda items, we only ask that you state your name for the record and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Does any member of the public wish to comment on any of the consent agenda items?
Jose Camacho, Francis Smith Coles, Rock the Block. Consent agenda item, it's the approval of the minutes, I believe that's August twentieth. This probably seems like a very clerical, mundane, unimportant matter to you guys. But I believe as a historical record, it has the potential and actually the actuality of erasing particular residents and city citizens in this town. I looked at the item where at the end, Councilmember Mokler responds to my description and condemnation of her idea of creating a cover story, water conservation as a way to hide the actual motive of a really horrible idea of hers, which is to soak the homeless who might happen to be in camping in, in the park. The way the minutes describe it, I'm quoting, Anna Mokler responded to comments regarding watering after hours at the parks and that she has had and continues to work on, blah, blah, blah. That's not what that was about. The most horrible thing for me was that her proposal in the Public Safety Committee hearing of August seventh, twenty twenty-five is a cover story. That water conservation would be the cover for actually perpetrating this evil thing, soaking the homeless, which by the way, that's a broad term. It could include children. It could include homeless people who have open wounds. It can include sick people, dying people. I could go on. So when this is recorded in the minutes, what you're doing by focusing on her statement instead of what it actually was about. The worst thing that that was about was the lie, deceit as policy. We saw it happening. It was in the works, and this is something I've accused the city of doing for almost two years now. It's endemic. So I've spoken about epistemic oppression. A corollary to that is agnotology, the creation of ignorance. When someone looks at this minute as a historical record, they're going to be imbued with the ignorance, the unreality that this was about sprinkling the parks. It wasn't. That was a lie. That was a cover story. That is unreal. So this is perpetuating a lie, propagating agnotology, erasing the harms to the homeless people she was planning on. There has to be a better way to do minutes.
Mr. Erickson, do we have any member of the public online? We have two hands raised. Go ahead, please, call him. Observer.
Hi.
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 Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm, I'm over. I gotta turn this, some background stuff going on.
There you go.
Are we square? Okay, so I'm Gala Beach District Five. I watched the study session and I'm, I, I didn't hear her list the contract with Salish Health. This, that is on the agenda, correct? No.
Yeah, so if you have concerns about the Salish Health thing, that would be reserved for.
Public comment.
Public recognition. Right now, we're on the consent agenda.
Okay, is, and then what about the MFTE?
That, that's gonna be under general business, so.
You'll call me.
Stand by.
I'll just chill in the background.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Erickson, we have another caller, please.
Kimmy Sibians.
Go ahead, please.
Hi, is this for public comment?
No, this is the consent agenda.
Okay, I can talk later then. Thank you.
Okay, very well. Well, better safe than sorry, folks. So again. So I'm sorry, Ms. Weld. So this is consent agenda. Thanks. And does anyone else, we, we covered the people online. Does anyone wish to speak on the consent agenda items? Sure, go ahead.
I would like to. I would. I would like to, my name is Robin Weldon, and I would like to adopt Jose Camacho's comments about Councilperson Mokler. And so I'm speaking to that. To Councilperson Goodnow, who made excuses for Councilperson Mokler by saying that her suggestion at the August seventh Public Safety Meeting was just an idea and that sometimes the wrong thing, words come out of our mouth, our, our, the council's mouths. I call BS. Councilperson Mokler stated that she ran it by the Parks Commissioner twice before bringing up her well-thought-out suggestion and deception at the Public Safety Meeting. The subject that you all, you all were discussing at the Public Safety Meeting was deterring the homeless. She was not only came, came up with the idea of turning the water on people at night, were trying to sleep, but, but for, but, but comfortable in saying it to you casually while eating a sandwich. She felt comfortable because the council had been dehumanizing and criminalizing unhoused residents since the council's vote that the mayor then implemented two years ago for the inhumane no camping ordinance. Mokler also came up with the deception, telling the public residents of Bremerton, the people of her district, that it was to conserve water. She was suggesting that. She felt comfortable speaking about it, this with Councilperson Frey, Councilperson Goodnow, and Police Chief Wolf. Why? Because this council and the mayor have created a culture of cruelty for unhoused residents and people living in poverty. Any, and that means anyone making minimum wage or less on a fixed income, elderly, disabled, war veterans with injuries that where they have to self-medicate, working families and women and children escaping domestic violence. Mokler felt confident saying that she did, did what she did because she knew how you all felt, but forgot that she was being recorded. Unlike the rest of you with, that go along with this inhumanity to give developers, the Kita Cartel and the insider Quincy Square exclusive crowd their curb appeal, Councilperson Mokler said the quiet part out loud. She outed all of you. I don't just believe that Mokler should be censured. I believe that she should resign. Mokler has shown that she does not represent all the residents in her district. She has, she was caught on camera saying that this city's policy.
Okay, thank you. So folks, I gave Ms. Weldon the benefit of the doubt due to the council member reports, as Mr. Camacho said, that Anna Mokler responded to comments, and I take it you're referring to those comments when you made those comments that you did. You also have an opportunity for public recognition as well. So you're welcome to speak up in public recognition as well, but I didn't want to interfere. Is, you're all good. All right. So Council, if you disagree with me not interfering, that's on me. Okay, anyone else or any comments on the consent agenda? Again, there'll be time for public recognition next. See none? We, we will close consent agenda. Now we'll go to public recognition. As indicated on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry.
President Younger.
You know what? That's crazy. That's the first time I've done that. And been a council president, not just this year, but for a while. I've never messed up like that. Hey, folks. Seeing no more comments from the public, I'll turn to the council for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion as second. I'll call for the question.
Councilmember Chamberlain.
Yes.
Fry.
Yes.
Coughlin.
Yes.
Rebulowski.
Yes.
Goodnow.
Yes.
Younger.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, let's see if I don't mess up the rest of the evening. Probably will. Next up is public recognition. As indicated in the agenda, public recognition provides an opportunity for attendees to address the council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda. So we've got one general business item, the MFTE. This is not interactive, and the council is here to listen to your concerns and questions. A reminder now that it is election season. Please refrain from any comments on political campaigns or ballot measures. There'll be no public comments accepted via Zoom tonight unless prior arrangements were made through the city clerk by calling three, six, zero, four, seven, three, five, three, two, three, at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. And I do believe we have two callers, and we've already heard from them,
Correct.
that will be talking tonight on public recognition via Zoom. Again, we only ask that you state your name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. The timer system will be used so that everyone is treated fairly. With that up, I now open up for public recognition.
Mary, the long, longtime resident of Bremerton, God bless us all and keep us aware of what I'm about to say and the words that our Pledge of Allegiance grants us. And if anyone would like to stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance, now's your chance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Once again, I hope that this will be the formal opening of our future council meetings. This is from Mayor Wheeler. Webster's Dictionary defines volunteering when someone spends unpaid time doing something to benefit others. You can't give paid leave to employees to do volunteer work. It's not volunteer then. It's paid work. And there was a consideration in the newspaper where Mayor Wheeler had indicated that they were considering doing paid leave for staff to do volunteer work, and I object to that. Jennifer Briggs is a lovely person, I'm sure. I just met her. But the city of Bremerton can do without her and the one hundred thousand dollars plus salary for over fifty years. This very diverse community has used the principle of equal opportunity, I think quite well. We're a very diverse community, anyway. Have not we, have we not been abiding by that good practice? Oh, shush. Oh, no. My husband just called. Have we not been abiding by this good practice? Equal opportunity allows all who are qualified for a position in the city staffing, and the mayor has said that we have always hired based on qualifications. So I don't see the reason for DEI. Our city is about as diverse as you can get compared to Brainbridge Island and some other communities. Both Mayor Greg Wheeler and Janice have acknowledged the difficult financial squeeze in our future in a paper that I read of the Kitsap Sun, August third edition. In order to make ends meet, because the city will ignore President Trump's desire to banish the woke DEI philosophy and practice with a looming threat of losing nineteen million dollars of federal funding and other considerations, he, the Mayor Wheeler, and City Council have authorized a brand-new expense in hiring a DEI manager. The new manager is doing what our elected officials are supposed to be doing. Has the job description, description been defined yet? How is it that a job went, oh, went out for applicants to apply without a pure, straightforward job description? Doesn't seem like it's been completed. Anyway. I've lost my place. That's my time up. But anyway, I think you.
Thank you, Ms. Wong.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mark Lesperance. I'm a board member with Bremerton Food Line. And I'd like to share a little update on the work that we're doing. Bremerton Food Line has submitted our twenty twenty-five Turkey Trot Permit, and we're grateful to the city for your partnership in making this a signature community event. Last year, we welcomed more than nine hundred participants. This year, we're aiming for two thousand. We've also launched a brand-new grocery-on-the-go program with nearly two hundred thousand dollars secured from Kitsap County and the Washington State Department of Agriculture. We're building a food delivery systems for our homebound and disabled seniors who face severe transportation barriers. We currently serve nineteen households and expect to reach between seventy-five and a hundred households by early twenty twenty-six. Thanks to the partnerships with Kitsap Harvest and Meals on Wheels, we're able to expand efficiently by leveraging existing transportation networks. Please note that since twenty twenty-three, client services at the Bremerton Food Line have increased forty percent. We've met that demand through the strength of our volunteers, partners, donors, and with the support of the city of Bremerton. Because food insecurity often points to deeper needs, we've integrated onsite case management and resource partners. Peninsula Community Health brings their mobile medical and dental care once a month. Scarlet Road, Kitsap Regional Library Adult Services, and Tyler, their tech expert. Kitsap Homes of Compassion, Adani Counseling, Kitsap Public Health, and Snap Ed are all providing critical support, and we appreciate each and one of them in this partnership. While WIC can no longer join us due to funding cuts, we appreciate the partnership we had with Kristen LaVoy. We are also working with Kitsap Housing, KCR. And through that, we've seen how important it is for our outreach teams to be apprised of updates so that the community knows their rights under the Bremerton Municipal Court five point oh, six point oh, seven, oh, relocation assistance. Many of our clients live on the edge of housing insecurity, and we value every opportunity to advocate for protections against unsafe living conditions. On behalf of the Bremerton Food Line, thanks for your continued support of our mission and our community.
Good evening. I'm Jocelyn. I'm with the Bremerton Prayer Walk and also Rock the Block, and I, I just like to come in here and kind of give an idea of what's, what's happening down on the streets, what we're seeing, some of the biggest concerns that we're seeing. And I've had the opportunity to speak to some of you, and the problem is getting worse. Like I said last time, it's not getting better. We've got so many moms. Today was the first day back to school, and my heart just broke for these kids that are going in and trying to do a normal day after not sleeping all night because they don't have a place to go, and my heart just breaks for those kids. There's not enough places for them. There's not enough resources for them. We, we hear all the time that there's, that the homeless do not want the resources that are given to them. And the fact is, is that the resources are not there. They're given these illusory resources, illusory, illusory resources. Yeah, they're given these resources that just don't exist, and then they're saying they're not. We just lost another guy on the streets. And you can say, the autopsy's not back, so we don't know, but certainly not being able to rest, having no place to rest at all is one of those, and that's currently what our, 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 our police are tasked with doing is moving people along, moving them along so they're not seen, moving them along so they're not interrupting our, 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 our appearance of being a, the number two coastal city in, in, in the United States. And truthfully, if we're getting that recognition, as people are dying, it's not worth it. It's not worth it. And you know, I, my marine, he's still not, all of my moms and their kids are still not housed, not even a, a, a hope of housing at this point in time. They're Section Eight vouchers, but there's no housing for them. So we have a huge problem. And the one thing that we can do right now is to do a moratorium on this anti-camping law. This anti-camping ordinance right now is being utilized in ways that was not comprehended when we were arguing it to be good. Nobody thought that the police were gonna take people out of their vehicles and arrest them for being in their vehicles for nowhere else to go. Nobody envisioned that at all, and that's currently what's happening. Nobody envisioned the police going down there and saying, you're gonna be arrested with this anti-camping ordinance. You cannot stand on the streets. You cannot sit on the streets, and that's a lie. We're all able to do that. That's part of being a citizen of, of, of a city. I mean, we see people all the time taking a break and taking a rest. But if you look homeless, if you look disadvantaged, you're not gonna get that same structure. Then we hear of the parks, that the parks aren't being open to individuals. They're being asked to move along too. There is literally no place for some people to exist in the city of Bremerton, and there's no resources for them to go elsewhere. People are dying, and it's not worth it. I also just wanted to say, Janice, with the DEI, one of the best things we have.
My name is Robin Weldon. I actually commented in the wrong area. I think you get the gist of what I was talking about. That I was commenting on the August seventh comment from Anna Mokler, and I, I just was going to continue on to tell, say that I, I really do feel that she should resign. I don't believe she serves all of the people of her district. But I'm gonna move on from that because I actually sent this to, in the right place, public recognition, the whole, the whole email, the whole comment, so I don't need to go over that again. It's there. It's part of the record. I would like to just adopt Jocelyn's and Rock the Blocks and comment at the, here, I want those of us who are actually speaking to people on the street, those who are always helping people on the street, see exactly what's happening to people and the people that cannot afford to live inside in the city of Bremerton. They can't afford it. You have the qualifications for rent that they can't meet. Minimum wage people. They have no place to go because they don't meet those qualifications. Disabled people, elderly people, I'm seeing neighbors just become homeless. And, 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 and Jocelyn's right, there are mothers with children. I've met some of the children out there on the street due to domestic violence. There is, and they are treated terribly. And I also want to comment about Common Street. Common Street is a right-of-way place. It's a, you contract with Common Street, and they do nothing for people. I know someone that the, what Trisha Munson offered. I know someone that the, what Tricia Munson offered her was a parking spot in Gig Harbor. And, and she, she said, I have a car that's going to break down. There's no services out there. And so she refused it. And you know what happens when they refuse? They become a criminal vagrants. So then the police arrest them. So then there's arrest records. And then it's even harder to get apartments because they do background checks. And so if you have a criminal history, even if it's because due to being homeless and because of a really inhumane law that should not be a law, this, 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 this anti camping law.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Monica Houston, and this is my first time at a city council meeting. And I'm here because of our heroes like Kimmy Stevens and Jocelyn Gage and Robin Wellsen and Jose Camacho, who have been working so hard for the homeless. I know there's a lot of young people in this town. And one thing that we all care about is we want every single person to be housed. And we also, we're not ignorant, we have the whole internet, we know other countries have done this, we know other cities have done this. I've been to Asia, I've been to Europe, I've even been to Rwanda. And there's not homeless people on the street there like there are here. So there's definitely a way to do this. And I feel like there's a lack of vision and creativity, unfortunately, that we're still giving tax breaks to real estate developers. And we're losing two point three million dollars a year in our taxes because we're giving tax breaks to people who are doing nothing to solve this problem. Because housing is not a supply and demand issue. Housing is a totally different issue because we need housing to survive. It is not a supply and demand curve. Housing, people will take their units off the market if it benefits them. And that's what they're doing, that's what real estate developers are doing. They're taking their units off the market because they don't want to lower their price even a little bit. And meanwhile, people are dying of exposure on the street. And we are gonna fix that, we're gonna fix that because we can do it. And I want everybody, we're gonna build social housing. There are so many things we can do, build tiny house villages, build ADUs, there's so many creative solutions to this. If we just think a little bit more broadly. So I'm excited that we can solve this problem. And we, I want, I hope that the government comes along with us because if not, we're gonna vote you out. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, it's kinda hard to follow that. On another note, uh, my name is Kathy Lustig. I live in East Bremerton in an area called Anatai. It deeply saddens me to hear this about especially women and children. And there's something that we can do about this. I truly care about not just Anatai, but the whole area around me. Ruth Reese, who was a Manette and Anatai historian, who recently and sadly passed away, saw the wisdom to get Anatai designated a historical site. The first sawmill established at the mouth of Anatai Creek in eighteen fifty was the first, was first named Port Orchard, by the way, in case you didn't know that. I never hear this history anywhere. Members of the tribe worked at that mill and inhabited the forest in Anatai Creek before that. We have proof, cultural proof of this. At the north end of Anatai, along the shoreline in the upland forest, lies the former sixty-five acre Brimmer Estate, subsequently bought by Cheney. And most recently, up on the block to be able to cut down the forest and put up two hundred houses that are not affordable. The, on the shorelines of Anatai was found the bricks of the old house, the old Brimmer House. Those bricks were, came from England and they were called Snowball. Those bricks are in the same historic house up on Ilhi Creek at the Shute property, which is at the museum. I never hear anything about the, the history of Anatai anywhere. Your namesake William Brimmer was responsible for selling the land to the Navy for the shipyard and naval hospital. Why doesn't the city value this history? I encourage you to consider designating the Brimmer Estate a historical and culture present, cultural preservation site pursuant to the G M A. I don't see anything about historical preservation in your comp plan. Do you support Great Peninsula Conservancy in acquiring this property? Because they've acquired grants or been approved for grants to conserve this property. Yet the council isn't operating in opposition of this. Don't flush Anatai history down the sewer. Anatai is on the move, amending the Ilahi Plan. If you'd like to know a little bit more about it, go see ilahi slash anataicommunity.org to find out more about what we would like to do in Anatai. Thank you for your support.
Mr. Erickson, could you check online? I think we have a couple callers. Kimmy Stevens?
Hey, this is Kimmy Stevens. I'm a registered nurse representing myself and the Bremerton Homeless Community Coalition. Thank you guys for allowing me to speak. First, um, I'd like to acknowledge everyone listening, especially those of you who are unhoused or unstably housed. Your voices do matter. And I want you to know that more than fifty percent of renters in this region are living burdened by their housing costs alone. You aren't alone. All of your voices together could be so powerful. But I know that this isn't easy to do for many reasons. So today I would like to address a very concerning issue that arose during the August seventh public safety meeting where Councilmember Mochler proposed a policy that could potentially harm our most vulnerable citizens, the unhoused, by suggesting they be hosed down with sprinklers if they dare try to sleep at night in a public park. Contrary to common stereotypes, this group includes innocent children, mothers, fathers, elders, veterans, coworkers, and everyday good Americans who deserve our humanity and respect. Let's not forget twenty seventeen, an incident when Councilmember Leslie Dawgs faced public scrutiny during a personal trip to the Capitol in Washington, DC, where she was overheard saying a cuss word. Her behavior was sternly condemned by Councilmember Eric Younger, who reminded us all that elected officials are held to a higher standard because their actions reflect on the entire council. In stark contrast, now we see a very troubling lack of response to Councilmember Mochler's recent comments, which suggested harassing and physically harming those in our very own Bremerton, Washington disadvantaged communities. Councilmember Goodnow's defense of Mochler indicating that her remarks might stem from a lack of thought is simply unacceptable. We cannot allow inhumane proposals to be brushed aside or normalized this way. So tonight, I call upon this council to take a stand. I urge all of you, at the very least, to censure Councilmember Mochler for her comments and to clearly condemn the implications of her suggestions. We must reaffirm our commitment to treating all members of our community with dignity and respect, not just the wealthiest developers in this region. Thank you.
So we have another caller, Mr. Erickson. Gayla Breach? Gayla, I believe you're muted. Mr. Erickson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, never again, always in person. So I'm here to bring up, is it the contract or the agreement with Salish Behavioral Health? Um, I watched the study session. A lot of good things I see.
You, you've got some feedback. Do you have something in the background, uh, that you could shut on?
I don't. That is bizarre. Can you hear me?
Speaker's down. If you're on your cell phone, uh, take it off the speaker and then just talk onto the cell phone, please. So, Mr. Erickson, we'll, we'll give her a chance to figure things out and then we'll look for a hand again. So we'll resume with public recognition. I think we had another person or two that wanted to talk. Mr. Camacho, were you coming up?
Jose Camacho, Friend of Smith's Cove, Rock the Block. Uh, I'm gonna try to kill two birds with one stone. Uh, Mary Jo Reed challenged me to do something I had never done before to not let people forget about Gaza. So I'm going to say what we're doing there is a Holocaust courtesy of the US military might and our servility as a country to lobbies like A PAC. And that servitude, that servility to lobbies, to big money, makes us all complicit in things. We wake up in the morning, we don't think about the babies we've blown to bits. Uh, agnotology, because we are groomed to de-emphasize and slowly forget the horrors that we're committing. And this is where Anna Mochler comes in. I acknowledge, uh, Ms. Mochler's humanity and good deeds. I have a theory, you've heard me, you've heard me for almost two years, how corruption and creep has turned into a realty developer cartel in town, which taints, infects and corrupts like almost all public processes here. And what I saw in Mochler was her talking to an audience where she was trying to curry favor with, or trying to get a word in edgewise. And that was her way of saying something that she probably felt very comfortable she would get a yes answer to. Because you cannot have homeless people or public bathrooms next to the bright shiny buildings of the profiteers in town, which you guys worship as like some kind of civic benefactors. The cartel, the Wesley Larson, Sound West group, Steven Segal, uh, Rice, Fergus Miller, they've got a lock on you. I've actually seen them in still fear, in fervent supporters of Friend of Smith's Cove. In one day, a person will come to me in the abject fear and beg me never to mention them again in support. It's happened like three times and it is a complete panic. It's frightening to see. So when I see Mochler doing that, it's because that's probably one of the few things she can say and move up the, the ladder, I guess, uh, cause almost all of you do it. I'm going to give you a quote that shows you the power of developers in this town. A text to me, you have no idea about council's work on the new low barrier shelter that has to be kept on the background there so developers don't quash the dealings. There is fear in the council of the cartel and it's corrupting everything.
Okay, uh, last call from the, the public in the audience here for public recognition and then we'll try our caller. All right, we'll, we'll try our call. All right, Gayla, let's try again.
Are you ready? Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're sounding great now.
Perfect, I had to log out and log back in. Okay, so I am actually, my comment is addressing the contract slash agreement with, uh, Salish Behavioral Health. I watched the study session, I heard their little, their spiel, I, I, some of it was really good stuff, you know, going into the school, pretty good. The Narcon boxes, excellent, really excellent. I see a lot of money being spent though, like nine hundred, almost a million dollars, is that a million, almost a million dollars? I, I was not in agreement, they, they do not have the feet on the ground. Thirty-one percent of the people asked, I never got any, any bit of that information as far as, you know, my opinion or never seen it, never heard it, never, none of it. But thirty-one percent want easier access. They said that there wasn't a need for detox beds. I, I don't know if, I don't know if they've ever actually pulled up into the hilltop area and sat in front of the building waiting for a bed to open up and calling at midnight to see if there was a spot available. But, um, it, it's definitely needed. Um, there, there's no spaces, uh, looking for a bed, um, is, is a problem. I think that there's a lot of resources, they could probably do good if they partnered with somebody, partnered with Eagles Wings, partnered with Oxford, uh, getting people, housing people is part of the issue. Everybody knows that housing first works, getting in somewhere, um, getting out of treatment and having nowhere to go is a huge problem. Getting a bed, uh, with medical detox is also a problem. And unless you've seen somebody shaking, barfing, pooping, um, in absolute pain because they're without their drug of choice, substance abuse disorder is, uh, is a real problem. And I think that they can do good, but I think that they could do more and nine hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money for the value. And that's all I got on that. Thank you.
All right, so now I'm closing public recognition and I'll turn to Ms. Hoover for our, uh, general business item.
General Business Item Six A, Ordinance Number five, five, one, eight, to amend Bremerton Municipal Code, Chapter three point seven eight, entitled multi-family property tax exemption.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, our presenter tonight is Vice President Revloski, go ahead, please.
So this ordinance has been in place, um, with some modifications for about twelve years. The state developed this law, they say, as a tool to different cities, to encourage developers to come build in their city. The state, well, Peninsula Regional, um, P S, Puget Sound Regional Council also told us how many people that we have to grow our city for, which is twenty thousand in the next twenty years. They told Bainbridge, well, you have to take in two thousand. You know, they get a lot more open space and it's easier to build there, but that's how that works. So we had to change our codes and come up with programs to encourage people, developers, to build in our town and in specific areas that, um, you know, not the suburban areas of Bremerton, it had to be in the more urban areas. So former councils had okayed both an eight-year that had no restrictions, except you're not allowed, it can only be for housing. So if you build a building that has a marketplace and a gym in it, you're still supposed to be paying taxes on that portion of the building. It's only supposed to be for actual living units that they get an eight-year, um, tax break on. So there's also a twelve-year tax break that the city had implemented. And by tax break, I mean all taxes. Developers getting this don't pay school tax, they don't pay fire tax. They don't pay city tax, they don't pay county tax. But then what the tax assessor is forced to do is to spread that money, that tax burden around to everybody in the county. So like in the city of Bremerton, the average household right now is supposedly worth about three hundred thousand. So a household that, a house that is valued by the county at three hundred thousand is actually paying eighty dollars more a year to make up for what the developers are not paying on their property. So this has always been a big problem with me. And I worked with council, I, I proposed. I, I proposed a moratorium on all of them until we could get it worked out, and I only got one person to go along with me. So this ordinance that we're proposing is a compromise between all council members because, um, frankly, the majority of them don't agree with my point of view on it, so. But they're all willing to change part of it, which is getting rid of the twelve-year automatic extension that the only thing people have to do, developers have to do is ask for it and fill out some paperwork, and they get a twelve-year extension if twenty percent of the units are affordable. But the affordability is based on HUD numbers, and I think right now HUD says the average median income is a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, and in Bremerton, it's actually seventy-two thousand dollars. So by using the HUD numbers and what they consider affordable is for a moderate income property, it'd be eighty percent to a hundred and fifteen percent of that HUD number. And if it was lower income, it'd be less than eighty percent of that number. So what HUD is saying is if you make eighty to eighty-three thousand, I don't have the exact number, that you qualify for low-income housing. Well, our income, you know, most people, their incomes are a lot lower. I mean, five years ago, forty percent of people in Bremerton made forty thousand or less. So right now, incomes have gone up because we've had a lot of people move here during COVID with more money, paying cash for houses, or, you know, putting sizable down payments. So, you know, now they're saying our income level is seventy thousand per, I mean, the census says seventy-two thousand versus what HUD says, because HUD takes Bainbridge Island, um, Bremerton, portions of Port Orchard, and portions of Silverdale, and they take all those incomes and average it, and that's how they come up with the number. It's not reflective at all of our community. It'd be a great deal for somebody in Bainbridge Island to only have to pay, you know, be making eighty thousand or less and actually get, be considered low income, which probably are in Bainbridge, I don't know. So what this ordinance is proposing to do is only having the eight-year, no extensions, no affordable, because for giving the people an extra four years, we're not really developing affordable housing for our community. So, and there's, there's other ways of doing it, and it's not with the MFT. So, um, that's my proposal, and I'd love to hear everybody's thoughts on it.
Okay, thank you. With that, does any member of the public wish to comment on the item?
Geez, maybe I should move to Bainbridge and move into that new affordable housing they're building where the old police station is.
If they.
Yeah, if they build it. Um, there's got to be another solution to determine the affordability and the boundaries of which HUD uses. There, there's got to be a way to change it to as more representative of our area. I mean, I understand that you're trying to compromise here to do the eight, eight-year thing, but the developer cartel in this area is far, become far too wealthy off the backs of everybody else. Uh, I just don't think this is a good solution. Something has to be done to define the true affordability in Bremerton and in our county. Uh, and that doesn't include Bremerton, I mean, or Bainbridge Island, it's just not, it's, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to do the math on this. It's not fair to the lower-income people. So that's what I have to say.
My name is Robin Weldon. Um, I would like to incorporate Catherine Lustig's comment. Um, I, you know, as far as the, um, going along, you know, having affordable housing be defined by Bainbridge Island and everything, I looked it up a little bit, and you can actually petition Washington State, you can actually go to Washington State and get it redefined, so it just represents your city. There is, are ways to do it if you care enough. If you want to put as much effort into that as you do to this guy, Wesley Arthur Larson. I, I borrowed Thomas Nast, um, he was a, a, um, political cartoonist in eighteen seventy-one. He actually brought down, um, the New York, uh, New York City Corruption Ring headed by Boss Tweed, who I, who is very much like Wes Larson, who owns basically the politicians and this city. Um, you guys bend over backwards for him all the time. You bend over backwards for the Kida Cartel, which is K car and DBA and K, and KBA and the Chamber of Commerce, all of those guys, the, the Quincy Square crowd, the Fourth Street Action Group, which was filled with Wesley Larson and Goodnow and Spencer. And, you know, it's just gross, in the words of Gala, gross. Anyway, as far as MFTs, that eight-year MFT is a giveaway. These guys do not, they pay zero toward our city services, zero property taxes and nothing. They don't even have any desire to build any type of affordable housing. These are market rate and luxury, um, developers. They're also, you know, Wesley Larson is also, you know, he's got like a stranglehold on the city in many other ways. SWG is a, um, is just an umbrella for hundreds of LLCs that only, they, 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 they play like a shell game. Only the rich can play, and you guys, just like I said, bend over backwards for them. So as far as the MFT, the eight-year MFT, cut them off. You were talking about a moratorium, cut them off. And of course, they're not going to use the twelve-year MFT with the, um, uh, where they have to provide twenty percent, um, affordable housing, which you could redefine as this city's median income if you really wanted to. They're not going to choose that one if they can get eight years free, and Andrea Spencer afterwards just gives them another twelve years. That was, and for the spyglass, that is what he got, twelve years, eight, twelve years.
Hey, Levine, um, as I understand it, this is an ordinance that's a compromise between getting rid of the tax break and just getting rid of the twelve-year extension. Um, I'm open to being wrong. I, I, I guess if I'm correct, I'm glad that I lack the creativity to think that that is a great solution to our economic problems. Like I, it seems like if we were to get rid of the tax break, we could actually pay for the services that we want in the city of Bremerton. Um, and I, I mean, I'm a pretty creative person, but I'm happy to lack this creativity, I suppose. Um, I, I guess maybe one justification would be that it would deter all developers from developing in the area, but we don't know. We don't actually know that. Um, it's a speculation, but we don't actually know that to be true. But we do know that if the developers did continue to develop here and we got rid of the tax break, that they would actually have to pay taxes, that we could pay for our schools, that we could continue to give money to services like the Bremerton Food Line, that we could continue to build more housing, that we could continue to build more affordable housing, that we could continue to build a better housing shelter for folks who find themselves in the unfortunate circumstance between housing, that we could afford to put more bathrooms in, um, just public bathrooms in places. Um, yeah, so I'm glad I lacked this creativity, but good on you, I guess.
Hey, Mr. Erickson, could you see if someone's online?
Yeah, we have three hands raised.
Okay, we'll, we'll go all three then.
Gala, you're up.
Okay, I, here's my point on the MFT. I'm so glad it was brought up. Um, so was hugely disappointed that the moratorium was shot down, you know, so many months ago. What a waste of time. Um, I, I'm also going to bring up that in two thousand and seventeen, Mayor Wheeler brought up ending it and was, and was shot down. So from seventeen to twenty-five, that's what, eight years of, of, of loss, of loss. Um, shortfalls for Bremerton, uh, we've got these nice beautiful buildings with, you know, beautiful views, uh, high-end, and then nothing, nothing for us regular folks. Um, thankfully, I own my home. Sadly, I own my, own my home because my taxes go up every year. Uh, I, I'm paying thirty-five hundred, roughly thirty-five hundred dollars a year for not, uh, an okay house, not bad. Um, I don't mind paying for service, I've said it a million times. I'm going to also bring up the point that, uh, when West Park was supposedly planned, there was, um, six hundred and thirty units were taken down, replaced with, uh, three hundred and something, affordable. Um, there, there was a huge opportunity there, uh, huge opportunity there that wasn't taken. Um, I guess MFTs were more important. Uh, there's one percent, one percent in Bremerton that are in my pocket. I don't like it. I don't like it. I don't like it when somebody that can afford to pay for stuff don't want to pay for stuff. I don't like it that somebody's buying up all the waterfront properties so that they can make these overpriced, um, unaffordable to most units and taking advantage of, uh, taking advantage of an MFT. I don't think you guys, it's all you because it was created before you. If this is council members before you, mayors before you, all planned, but you guys got a lot of work that you guys got to figure out. Something has to happen. People shouldn't be living on the streets. It makes no darn sense at all. It really doesn't. Something has to be done. I don't know what has to be done, but it has to be something, and it's got to be quick because you're, you can't think past the end of your nose at, at this point. It's like somebody didn't think past the end of their nose a couple of years ago, but y'all got to fix it. Fix it, please. Thank you.
Kimmy Stevens? Kimmy Stevens, it's your turn.
Hey, uh, this is Kimmy Stevens again. Uh, this proposed MFT for developers sadly, uh, won't meet our community's needs, and this is all going to get worse if you guys keep favoring developers who are building these like totally unaffordable units. It's important for everyone listening to know that cities, not developers, set the tax break rules, and they can set them stricter than HUD. I thought most people knew about inflated AMI challenges, so I'm kind of shocked that our leaders are at this point. Um, and we should also be very aware of the connections between some of the council members and wealthy developers in our area. The council has other options they can explore. Um, these particular tax exemptions are leading to all of these like luxury apartments that are totally out of reach for our own residents, and Councilmember Revlosky has rightly questioned the logic behind this, and there should be a moratorium. Um, some people say MFT isn't focused on affordable housing. Well, it can be, and it should be. Uh, this program has the potential to increase the supply of affordable housing if specific requirements are established, which is something you guys can actually do. Um, so, uh, about the Growth Management Act, Bremerton has to grow over the next twenty years. So your current strategy is favoring wealthy developers over the needs of our actual residents. Um, and then developers are often claiming that building in our city is so costly, but there is this huge lack of transparency regarding why. Why is it so expensive for them, especially given the substantial incentives that they get? Um, the eight-year MFT lacks affordable housing requirements, which are going to leave so many more people behind that are already struggling. So as you guys go on, I urge you to prioritize the voices of your actual residents over those of wealthy developers. Other cities, like, look at Port Orchard, they don't utilize the program or they repealed it. Um, Shoreline, they mandate a mix of affordable units to address those inflated AMI challenges. Uh, one strategy worth considering is implementing a localized AMI calculation, and I don't think people are telling you that the city can impose stricter measures than what HUD says. So a localized AMI calculation would ensure that affordability reflects the income levels of actual Bremerton residents. Since the regional AMI is crazy, it's more than a hundred and fifty percent of what a typical resident, resident makes, you can actually adjust the AMI for determining affordability accordingly, like other cities have done this, and we can too. I support solutions that keep our residents here and safe, and your proposal is risking displacing those who are struggling and attracts all these wealthy newcomers. It's up to you to decide what kind of Bremerton we all want. So please just be transparent about your choices so people can decide whether to support you based on your actual votes and not just these empty words. Thank you.
Marva Lang, it's your turn.
Uh, as you can see, Marvin Lang, and I, this MSPs I always thought was, and I always understood they were for developers that were going to build affordable housing. And I'm seventy-nine years old and struggling because I have a decent income, and still rents are getting very high for me. The place I live has gone up almost three hundred dollars since I moved in in twenty-twenty-one. However, I have a granddaughter who is homeless and living in a shelter with her three-year-old boy. Her husband's staying with friends out in Belfa. Both girls are farmed out to friends stay with them because they couldn't afford their housing. They got laid off, their jobs, and one of them did, and within two months, there was no way to make up the twenty-two hundred dollars a month rent that they were being charged for a three-bedroom apartment. So I've seen it on, on both ends. I've seen people in the streets, I see families in their motorhomes, I see people living in their cars. These people aren't substance abusers, they're not lazy, they have jobs that they can't afford to pay rent. And if it gets any worse, I'm not going to be able to afford to pay rent, and I just don't want to be on the streets. I, I just think that Bremerton needs to figure out what they're going to do. I mean, why didn't we need Quincy Square? He lived here for eight years of his ninety-one years of life. And things like that don't make sense to me when we have so many people that are hurting, and that's it.
Okay, Mr. Erickson, so I'll check back with you after we get some more, uh, comments from the public. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this?
Hi, uh, my name's Alden Bradford, live here in Bremerton. I'd like to preface this by saying I actually do think that we need to find ways to make it cheaper to build housing in Bremerton. Um, and tax incentives are one way that you can do that. I do think we have to be smart about how we structure those incentives. A shortage, which we have a pretty severe shortage, is we have too many dollars chasing too few units. We have people who are priced out of Seattle who come spend their money here. That drives the price up on the housing units here. So most of my friends who have low incomes don't live in new apartments, they don't live in new units, they live in older homes. Um, I think what we really have a shortage of is houses that were built thirty years ago. Um, we didn't have enough housing being built then, so we don't have enough housing that's matriculating into the, uh, lower-priced supply now, and we're having to confront that. Uh, so we have to tax someone to be a city that offers services, to be a city, we have to collect taxes, and it's a question of who we should collect that taxes from. Uh, currently, with the tax exemption, once that decides is, all right, these new houses, those ones are not going to be taxed. Instead, we're going to tax the older housing supply. That's where a lot of the low-income people are housed. Uh, so I don't think this tax exemption is a good way of distributing the taxes that we impose in order to encourage more development. So I support cutting the duration of the tax exemption. Thank you.
Good evening, council.
My name is Jamie Clough, and I'm representing the builders living and working in Kitsap. We recommend that you reject the proposal to end the twelve-year multifamily tax exemption program. Since no developments have been built using the twenty-year program, we understand the reasoning behind removing the twenty-year option. But I urge you to keep the twelve-year program in place. We have already used this program to bring new projects to Bremerton and ending it would cut off support for future viable projects. The MFT programs will not solve our national housing crisis, but they are some of the best tools currently available to affect rental housing supply. These programs are not handouts. They are investments to generate housing and arguably more intact revenue and economic growth than the temporary exemption provides. When an MFT project is built, Bremerton gains construction jobs, infrastructure improvements like sidewalks and utility connections, as well as residents who shop in our stores and eat in our restaurants. The land and any commercial or pre-existing structure is still taxed, and the residential property tax revenue starts once the exemption expires. Even during the exemption, we see we see sales tax, utility tax, and business activity from MFT residents that benefit the city. Over the lifetime of these buildings, the economic return to Bremerton is almost certainly greater than the value of the tax break. Bremerton has made real progress in growing and keeping up with demand, but we face an inherent disadvantage because of our geographic and economic position relative to Seattle. Developers have easier, more lucrative options across the water and thus make it harder to attract the investment we need to to build more homes here. The multifamily tax exemption program is one of the most important tools we have to attract that investment and bring new housing online and ensure we meet our growth requirements. We urge you to think long-term. MFT strengthens Bremerton's tax base, grows our economy, and incentivizes homes we desperately need. There is nothing to lose from keeping this program. Please oppose the motion and keep the twelve-year program in place. Thank you.
Monica Houston, there is something to lose by keeping this program, and that is two-point-three million dollars a year in tax revenue that could go towards all sorts of services. I happen to know so many poor and middle-class people who are taking in homeless people into their garages, onto their couches. Why aren't these people receiving tax breaks? Personally, my taxes have gone up from when I first moved here eight years ago, two hundred dollars to they're six hundred dollars a month now. Which is an absurd increase considering that learning after learning that these people make so much money off of their units. After eight years, after ten years, a building is already profitable. A commercial real estate building is profitable between ten, like eight and fifteen years after it's developed. These buildings are already have already paid for themselves. They don't need a tax break. They could keep giving people the same rents if they wanted to. They just want to keep breaking in profits. When we give tax breaks to corporations, like for instance, when tax breaks are given to Amazon to move to to New York or wherever they went, that city saw no benefits. If you look into the data, the data is there that giving tax breaks to corporations does not actually help people. What actually would help the economy and boost the economy is if our actual citizens were able to pay less of their income in housing so they could stimulate the economy by going out and spending money at businesses because they weren't paying a hundred percent of their income on housing and barely getting by. Thank you.
I just have a question about the allowing developers to come into the interior of the city and build multi-units without some understanding that a percentage of their construction has to be in a range that can be reached by some people that are on low income. Because we do have a lot of low-income people in the city of Bremerton. And if they're allowed to come in and they don't have to pay taxes on it, so they build, but is there any other benefit for the citizens? They're being outpriced in their homes, but when new builders come in, shouldn't they be required to build a certain percentage percentage of those units at a very reasonable rate? Kind of a mixed deal, but they have to comply with that in order to get a license to construct a new building. I just don't understand why that's not implicated or applied to the licensing and the invitation to builders.
Okay, anyone else for public comment?
Jose Camacho, friend of Smith's Cove. Rock the block. You guys changed the goalpost. You don't want to admit you capitulated or you failed. The moratorium idea in May was about freezing the eight-year no strings attached version. It was about housing equity. It was about developing a way to get low income actually built. I looked at the study session and it's like I dipped into an alternate reality. You guys are trying to sell something. It's not how you started. So you changed the goalpost and now you have this whole dog and pony show like you really did something. You didn't. You are continuing the gravy train to developers. You go back to twenty-eighteen. And it's the same thing. The only difference from twenty-eighteen to now is the mayor of law people actually had the decency to say, when you subsidize developers, you displace renters. And that politician, who I think is probably a sociopath, you haven't heard anyone talk like that since. And the reason why you haven't is because you guys are afraid of Sound West Group and the rest of the cartel. You guys don't know how to exist without their permission. So that study session that led to here is the dog and pony show. In May, it was about town halls, listening sessions. This hearing, you're ramming down the throat of the public, a deceptive proceeding. This is a failure. You're still kowtowing to developers who have done nothing for years for the low income. The entire con planning, you saw a parade of people, all these different factions, even nonprofits talking about, we really got to change the zoning code because affordable housing, we got increased heights because affordable housing. That that was always a scam. It's been a scam for years. They invoke that knowing they have no intention of building it. They don't care. So it's your job to legislate. It's your job to care. You do not need to kowtow to developers. Other municipalities have found ways to make the MFT customized for local conditions. We have the Navy here with their residence stipends for their members. That affects things. We have a overwhelmingly dominant cartel. You have to deal with that problem, not us. People are just trying to survive. You got people suggesting we host a hospice in parks, which includes children. You are not solving anything. You're capitulating and then you're trying to deceive the public. I saw the Chamber of Commerce person here kissing Jane's butt for the first time in her life because she's happy. This this does the job for Sound West Group. It doesn't help anyone else.
Okay, anyone else for a public comment? Mr. Erickson, will you check online?
Nobody else online.
All right, thank you. So now I'm closing public comment. Now I'll go to the council for a motion.
Move to approve ordinance number five-five-one-eight, amending chapter three-point-seven-eight of the Bremerton Municipal Code, BMC, entitled Multifamily Property Tax Exemption.
Okay, do I have second? All second.
Motion second. Now it's for comments and concerns for the council, starting with Councilmember Goodnow.
So I think we had a pretty good discussion at a study session last Wednesday on this. And, you know, nothing's perfect. It's tough to get something completely right. And so I think this is a chance to kind of give a give a a stop to the things that we don't think are being used and being effective. You know, when this was brought to the council originally, we were hoping for more results for affordable housing. And that's that's why we're looking to remove this and maybe come up with something else. I had hoped that we might be able to come up with other tools for the toolbox. But I think there's some definite interest in removing this. But partly because the way it was sort of packaged and sold to us as council members even, and so we want to we want to move forward with this. And yeah, that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Fry.
I've been looking into MFTs and and other things as a special interest from a business, small business perspective since I was with the chamber. And so I've been learning and talking about it for years and not really being able to come up with any a solution myself. And I come into council and we're talking about it. And it's hard to wrestle with. It really is. There's a need for housing. There's a distinct need for affordability. But I ask myself the question, and I think one of our regulars brought it up. To think we're going to get affordability out of new development. Think about that for a minute. You know, it's it's difficult to build in this economy with a whole list of reasons. Somebody wanted to know why things have gone up. I don't know. I mean, the pair of shorts that I usually buy is usually twenty-nine and now it's forty-nine. You know, within a year, I, you know, I, things are going up and I won't list all the different reasons why. I don't believe that that I bend over for developers, but I do listen to the people that build our homes. I do listen. I really do. And I watch them and I watch what they build and how it's used. And I've had, you know, now ten or twelve years to do that in Bremerton. And so all that influences my own decisions as all that influences everybody's, you know, our lives. I'm not some rich fat cat, folks. I live up on Halverson in a duplex and I pay twelve-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a month for it. And that's about a third of my income. It was built in the nineteen forties. Okay, my landlord gives me a good rent on something that's very old. And that has to be, you know, I've got to put a lot of into it. But the people that build our homes, when they tell me that something won't pencil out and explain to me the millions and millions and millions of dollars that they have to invest in buying the property, the materials, the labor, all of that. When you see how it pencils out, I'm not, I'm really not surprised that we're not seeing more affordability in brand-new development. Hey? That being said, I think that the MFT is one of our best tools to provide affordability for workforce housing. And that's what we see in my district at Blue Ridge. You know, y'all can talk about how you feel about this. I'm seeing this in my district. I have over three hundred units, brand-new units that are market rate. There's no affordability there. There was an MFT. He never would have built it. And that's the other thing I keep hearing. We're losing two-point-three million dollars of taxes. That land where Marina Square is built right now was a was it was flat. It was, I think it was a parking lot. We weren't getting two-point-three million dollars on that. So it's it's very frustrating to hear that kind of comparison. It wouldn't be built. When I hear Blue Ridge up at Rydell, okay, they are full. They're full. They've got a waiting list, over three hundred people, no units of housing. That was built with MFT, the eight-year MFT. Okay, that's why I support the MFT because I've got an old hospital up in East Bremerton, you may remember. Well, it's no longer there. And we've got acres of sheeting on the hillside now. It's it's derelict. Okay, who's going to buy and build on that without an MFT? My district needs the MFT and that's and Bremerton needs the MFT. And I'm not in cahoots with the developers. I'm simply listening. Okay, but the allegations, give me grace, the allegations that have been made over and over and over again for months and months and months are wearing. There's a civility that I believe in. And when there are personal attacks made, I believe we've broken down in our civility. And I don't think we have to do that. I really don't. Let's try to keep things civil. I haven't used a single person's name, you know? Let's try to keep it civil, treat one another with respect. I listen to you all and I agonize over the decisions. But I've got a district that needs this, and that's who I represent.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chairman.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, is that okay? So this was something that was we've been talking about ever since I've been on council. So four years ago, so thank you, Director Riley, for pulling up these emails. I've got one presentation from DCD back in March twenty-third of twenty-two. And Counselor Coughlin, Counselor Goodnow, were you on Finance Committee with me at the time? I believe so. It was, I believe so. And that's when we talked about the Bremerton factor. I wanted to just kind of like clarify a couple of things we talked about. So it's been mentioned about the localizing the income. So we have a couple of tools available using census data or using the HUD data. And the discussion that we had regarding census data is that self-reported rather than verification, and that verification does need to be made in some way, and census was a little less reliable. I definitely understand the desire to localize the income to be more precise. And so that I'm still I'm still game for that discussion as well. And I thought that there are some really intriguing ideas, and I really appreciate that people are calling out the lack of creativity. I think, however, that this is just one discussion of many that we've been having about what to do about the housing crisis. So this, to me, this is an example of creativity. It's just a one example of the many that we've talked about and tried. I want I just want to say thank you to Councilor Rubelowski because while I was Chair of Finance Committee and then also while I was president, this issue continued to be kicked. This is a can that was kicked down the corridor. And so under those two, in my tenure, I just, you know, I'm very grateful that you picked this up and ran with it because when I was in leadership in those roles, things weren't getting done. And so thank you for bringing a head to that. I think that there's a lot that could be improved about the creativity, creative solutions that that we can make as a council. I'm in support of this primarily because this feels like a good compromise. And I think that's something that when it comes to bureaucracies and local government and government at large compromises to the benefit of the public are difficult to come by. I definitely appreciate the comments that folks are making about developers because we have, and Councilor Rubelowski has called this out too, there are ways in which developers have manipulated this tool to their benefit, owner-occupied and building luxury, like there are condos, there are long-term stay places that are being that are receiving tax breaks from this program that really shouldn't be. And so I'm looking forward to this revision to cut off some of those abuses. And so I'm looking forward to this revision to cut off some of those abuses of this program. Uh, the language that is, uh, that is, that's in this, cut some of that out. And so for now, that's all the comments I'd like to make. I'm sure other counselors have many good points. I see Counselor Coughlin, he's got a whole list of them. He's going to want to make at the end, but I appreciate everybody's work on this and, uh, look forward to further discussion.
Councilmember Coughlin? Did you have your hand up? Okay, no, no worries. Councilmember Rebolowski.
Sure. As far as keeping the, the 12-year program, uh, there's been one, two, three, four properties that have chosen to do the, uh, the 12-year. And of that, we got 68 units of affordable, but really we got 25 affordable because that's a Sage Apartments that Peninsula Community Health bought for their workers. And those are truly affordable. They were only required to have six affordable and they have 25, basically all of their units. We did look at, um, trying to do the Bremerton factor. I don't see where that's going to get, um, big developers or even average developers to put in 20% affordable. I mean, we need different ways working with Bremerton Housing Authority to get more affordable apartments. I don't think MFTE is. Now, do I like the program? No, not at all. But it's compromise because I gotta count votes. I gotta have four people. And I know you don't like that. I'm being honest though. If I don't have four people or three others to agree with me, nothing's going to get passed. So compromises have to be made. Is this perfect? No. Is it better than it has been? Yes. And one thing too, I don't know that I pointed out was no longer are these going to be for owner occupied units either because we have a development in town selling $600,000 units that are using it as a marketing tool that, hey, you don't have to pay taxes for eight years. So that's gone from this revision for the multifamily tax exemption too. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilmember Coughlin?
Well, thank you, Council President. I think I just want to be clear, the goal is obviously to reduce housing prices. We've seen the crisis across the country and in Bremerton alone, housing prices are up, you know, 50% in the last seven to eight years. People are getting, people are getting displaced and we need more housing for working families. And we absolutely need units that are, you know, capped at affordable rates for people, right? That is, that is the goal. That's my goal. And I think as mentioned, the MFT program is one of many tools created by the state to try and further, further these goals. But it's complicated. Have you seen the discussion up here and the many discussions we have? There are a lot of moving components to this program and that's why when this was brought forward to council a couple of years ago, I asked for a, a deep dive and an analysis. Um, and really, really trying to dig into this program to see how we can make it work for Bremerton. And, you know, we, we didn't get it back then. Um, so I do want to give a lot of kudos to Councilmember Rebolowski for doing that deep dive and finding out a lot of the data and a lot of the information we needed to move forward. I want to be clear, one of the, one of the things that she did find out is, to be clear, it's not a loss of tax revenue. It's not that we're not getting a certain amount of taxes coming into the city by using this program. It is, it is a shift in those taxes. And that was one thing that she, she found out that was never explained to us in the past. You know, I do wish, as I, as I mentioned, a study session, um, I do wish we were able to apply that Bremerton factor to cap rents at a rate that is affordable for Bremerton and scale it in a way that was worked. Um, I would rather have that tool in our toolbox so that we can have those, those permanently priced affordable rates. But I understand the arguments that not many folks are using it right now. Um, and there was an argument by administration that staff time, a significant amount of staff time is taken to administer the program. So, um, ultimately I believe in compromise and I believe in rigorous discussion. I'm glad we've, we've had that over the many years now. And I hope that that saved staff time by administration. It's time that they can go into working with our community partners, um, on other affordable housing projects that we, that we need. So again, thank you for the discussion and, and for the compromise and, and for your leadership, Councilmember Rebolowski.
Okay, do we need a round two? Call for the questions.
Councilmember Fry?
Yes.
Coughlin?
Yes.
Rebolowski?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Chamberlain?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, that concludes general business. Now we'll turn to council member reports. It's an opportunity for council members to provide an update on any issues or events taking place in their district. Announce any events they recently attended or plan to attend or speak on any city-related topic. Since this is the first council meeting of the month, we'll start off on my left, District One Councilmember Chamberlain.
Um, I don't have a report per se. I don't think I have anything in particular to share. I really appreciated visiting, um, Doc Loves the Kids event. A nice job. Again, Counselor Rebolowski for getting a little boost set up there. Um, it was a lot of fun. And, um, man, those parking lots were packed. Um, I was thinking about, um, hoses. I was thinking about, um, people, people getting hoses turned on them and, uh, in, in reflection of, uh, what our constituents shared their concerns about today and, um, yeah, you know, that comment was bullshit. Uh, I was thinking also back to, um, I did a I did a little, um, timeout at Standing Rock and a few days after I left, there was these images that came out of, uh, federal agents turning fire hoses on activists and, um, in freezing or like cold temperatures, turning fire hoses on people and how absolutely devastating it was to see that footage. Uh, in my generation, that was happening. Um, you know, it's, uh, it's unkind. It's unkind to think about doing that to other, other folks, even if it was a joke. It's not funny. Uh, so I just, um, I think sometimes, uh, we need to be a little more, a little bit more careful about the way in which we propose ideas if it's going to be harmful for other people. Other than that, I don't really have anything else to say. Thanks for those who shared their thoughts today. And I appreciate you, uh, coming out and, um, voicing your opinions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Fry.
I'm still trying to figure out where that picture is from on my slide, but I'm gonna, I'll figure it out. This is what the old Harrison Hospital looks like right now. Um, can't wait for those rains to come. I did learn today and, and wanted to mention this, that, uh, CHI Franciscan, Virginia Mason, whatever, Common Spirit, uh, which was the owner of this property, uh, did sell it. Uh, and the sale fell through. The buyer pulled out. I don't know why. But it was in the last few months when we were talking about the MFTE and the moratorium. So I, you know, I don't know why. But luckily they had a second and so they expect to close on that in December is what I heard today. Uh, hopefully then we'll see the building of new multifamily housing on all those acres in East Bremerton. I can't wait. I can't wait for those families to go down to Heathens Bakery, uh, and get their sweets or get pizza at Campanas, um, and all those businesses that have been suffering, you know, since the hospital, uh, left and was subsequently demolished. So this is, uh, I am confident that this is a program that's going to get the housing that, that we need. Okay, next slide. Uh, View Ridge Elementary School, uh, near my home. That's a picture of what it's going to look like when it's built. Uh, they're getting started on it and there is an informational meeting, um, hosted by the district on the 10th of September. Uh, I'm going to definitely, uh, go. It's the night before I leave on vacation, but this is important. And I'm going to show the otters some love. Uh, so exciting. And Armin Jar, of course, is there temporarily as well. Okay, next. And there's an all-city cleanup, uh, Saturday, September 13th, and the dumpster happens to be in my district. You know, I'm, I'm going to do a spiel sometime on what all we put in my district. But the dumpster that has been selected is in District Two. It's over by Legion Field, which is all the big ball fields over there on Sheridan. Uh, so, uh, get involved. Let's clean up our, our neighborhood and I think that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Coughlin.
All right, thank you. And thank you as always to everyone for, for coming out and speaking up and those online. Just before I get to my slides here, a number of, just want to respond to some public comments. Um, as far as the, the minutes go, there are different types of minutes that can be, that can be taken. Um, one of those is action minutes where you don't describe what was said. You just described somebody gave a comment and others can go into more detail. Um, and I think what we heard tonight is one reason I actually favor action minutes, um, because it is really hard without a verbatim transcript to accurately summarize what, what somebody said and it's open to interpretation. So, um, it's also why I very much favor, uh, having recordings of all of our meetings, both study session and in person, and making those publicly available in perpetuity so that if there's any question on what was said, people can go, go back and watch. And these days you can get auto-generated transcript, um, thanks to AI. Uh, as far as the diversity and communication manager, to be clear, there was a job description that was approved by council last year that had vigorous, uh, discussion. That was approved and then the hiring process began. For Anatai, there is historical preservation in the cop plan. It's one of our goals this year. I know it's, uh, one and two other council members have been working on a historic preservation policy ordinance, um, that has a lot of nuances and difficulty to it, but absolutely want to preserve, but we can only do what we can do in, in city limits. So I encourage folks for Anatai, which is in the county, definitely please go to the Board of County Commissioners meeting, um, and have them as well work on historic preservation and preservation of those properties. I also do want to, you know, go on the record and say absolutely, um, Councilmembers Mocklers, uh, comments were, were ill-thought, inappropriate. And, uh, should be rejected. Um, and I'll keep it there, but I also want to say it's disturbing to hear some of the reports from, from public recognition about, um, arrests that were made recently. And I think that's something I'd like to hear more, more detail on. Um, and so hopefully in a future mayor's report, reporting on events like that and what happened would be, would be very valuable to get any facts out there and hopefully, um, looks like mayor has left, but, uh, being able to respond to those to get a summary of, of what's going on would be really helpful. At the very least, something in writing to the council to describe the actions, uh, taken by, by city. Uh, and then the last thing I've heard recently, I want to address too. There's a very, I think unfortunately, long and drawn out contract, um, with our city firefighters at the moment, um, that disturbs me to see go on for so long. Uh, but it's also disturbing to come to light that a levy was passed last year to fund more firefighter positions in order to get a fourth full-time unit. And that has not happened yet. And I would like an explanation from administration, um, at some point of what the barriers are and why that has not, um, that has not come to fruition. All right. Now for the difficult stuff, let's get on to the slightly more fun stuff. This one's not even fun, but, uh, to remind people, as I mentioned two weeks ago, this is the, today at midnight Pacific time is the deadline to get any comments into the Navy on the waterfront improvement project, um, working on the, the several alternatives they have. And again, I encourage folks to, to not necessarily even say I prefer this alternative or that alternative, but to express your concerns and, and say what you like about each one. Because my hope is that they will try and pick the best, um, of both alternatives for a new one and address all the concerns. So midnight tonight, uh, downtown tidy up every first Thursday at 5:30, um, either the Kissed Up History Museum and downtown Bremerton offices. Good way to, to pick up our downtown and then you get to meet folks as well interested in helping out the community and go out for a little happy hour after. And next slide, um, yeah, we got Manette Fest coming up on September 6th. Down in Manette, 10 AM to 3 PM, the Saturday, the world's tiniest parade, especially, yeah, kids up and down the street. It's very quick and very fun. And, um, again, a shout out to the Manette Business Association, um, for putting that on. And then also want to mention, uh, it was a couple of weeks ago, but also kudos to Manette Neighborhood Coalition for their, uh, bi-annual, uh, Manette Garden Tour, which is really neat to be able to go see all the local gardening happening, happening in our areas. So kudos to these organizations for putting on these wonderful events. And I believe my last slide is Bridging Bremerton is coming up on September 13th. If you've never been, Josh Farley gets everybody together to go do our bridge to bridge loop. I'm really excited for this. I will be super extra excited for the first one that this happens with a nice 12-foot accessible path on the east side of the bridge. Um, we got some information tonight that some state dollars are not flowing the way we were hoping they were. And so I'm hoping that does not translate into yet another delay on this project. I will stay optimistic, but look forward to the year that we get a bridging Bremerton with a brand new Warren Avenue Bridge multi-use path. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Rebolowski.
Yeah, thank you. Could I make first slide, please? So I just wanted to announce a great, um, contribution that Tim Ryan made to Olympic College, which is, um, in District Four. Uh, a lot of this money is, um, for healthcare and healthcare training, which we desperately need, um, in all of Kitsap, but I'm really, um, thrilled that Mr. Ryan and his family decided to gift our college with a million dollar gifts. Next slide, please. So next Thursday on September 11th, I'm having, um, a town hall. And Marwan Cameron, who's the founder of Gather Together, Grow Together, and Da Michelle Wilson, who works with Rock the Block and Socks Box, which is a, um, important charity that helps our folks who are unhoused are going to come and talk to the community about the struggles they're having and suggestions of things everybody in the community could do to help the situation. And not everything is dollars. So I hope people attend. It's at the Bremerton Food Line Office. Um, they have a really beautiful lobby and they let us hold our meetings there. So then, um, speaking of last week's study session, there's no slide for this, but I was, I was shocked frankly, um, with some of the things that Salish provided, uh, information they provided us. Now there's been multiple opioid, um, lawsuits that are being settled and some of them we get money for five years. Some, and, and these are like nationwide lawsuits, right? And then the state of Washington signs on and then any city that wants to signs on. So we get a very small percentage of funding, although it's added up to some significant money. And, um, I'm concerned that the things that the community has asked for aren't really, um, being, they don't appear to be being used by Salish. They're doing preventative things and they are, um, providing Narcon boxes in different locations. But to me, that's kind of the low hanging fruit and our contract with Salish is up in June of 2026. So I hope we as a community can talk about maybe different ways or suggesting they do other things or, or finding a different provider so that we really get the most that we can for this money. And, and to help those who are suffering the most with opioid addictions and the after effects of it. Because in the chart that they gave in the community, um, survey, over 50% wanted that money to go to directly to folks who are suffering from these types of, of problems. So then I, after that, um, presentation, I had a lot of phone calls and text messages from different, um, people, both in my district and other districts. And I don't know if you know this, but 85% of people who are admitted to jail, I don't know if that's the right I don't know if that's the right term, but 85% test positive for fentanyl. So there's things that we could be doing to really make a difference right there. I mean, we've got them there, obviously. And maybe there's some educational programs that, that go beyond preventative measures. It's like, where do you get help? How do you get help? And some of the things that I heard from community members was there are people who are unhoused who are turning down some of the services that are offered, such as going to treatment. And they said the reason why they're turning down treatment is because they know after 30 days, they're just going to get dropped off in front of Salvation Army or at a friend's house that they used to use with and go couch surfing. And so we really, we need some other options that are low-cost because we don't have a lot of money right now. But one thing you could do is, we sent a letter to every single church in Bremerton last year and asked them what was holding them back from having small, safe parking spots, like five, five cars. And we got two responses. One was from a church that we mistakenly sent to that was not in Bremerton city limits. And they asked us for help with police to get rid of the homeless that were in their parking lot. And another church did let us know that their issue that they were really working on was for elderly. So I would encourage you, if you're a churchgoer, to maybe talk to your community and see if they would consider five cars being parked at night in their parking lot. And another thing that all of us can do is reach out to Jocelyn at Bremerton Prayer Walk and say, hey, one car can park in front of my house or can park in my driveway. And it's not something everybody's going to want to do, but some of us are going to want to do it. And just think, if 100 households in Bremerton decided to do that, there'd be 100 less people hiding from whoever they're hiding from, you know? Be it the police or they might be in a domestic violence situation, but they have a vehicle. So at least they would know that they have a safe place with somebody who's going to keep an eye out to make sure they stay safe. And another thing that is pretty easy and inexpensive for people to do is offer to do some laundry, run a couple of loads of laundry, wash them, dry them, and give them back to Jocelyn and she'll get them back to the unhoused person. So I know none of these are like big fantastic ideas, but I think some of the things we can do to be a more charitable city is to just do a lot of little things until we can come up with better solutions for now. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Goodnow.
Yeah, I don't really have a report, but I just did want to thank Jane for all her work on the MFT. Like she was explaining, we, you know, we're, we're a government body. We're not, well, we are individuals, I promise. But we, you know, we, we have to work together to move things. And, you know, we had struggled with this, you know, the last, I don't know, it was still during COVID, I think. I think we were sitting in here. And it is just a lot of moving parts. And I just want to commend Jane for, you know, taking the time and breaking it down for all of us. And, you know, and also, you know, going for compromise herself. So thank you for that. And that's really all I have. Just maybe you'll see some of you at Art Walk tomorrow. So. Oh, I do have a slide. I'm sorry, forgot. Back it up. All right. So there is, Charleston Business District is, so I think it's the Fred Schoneman Overpass. Okay, the overpass, which goes over Wyckoff, kind of between Calo and, and Kitsap Way. There is the community down there, the business community, really, really, really impressively organized. And they have painted the underside of the bridge. Well, the, the city actually painted the bridge. But, and they're installing art panels down there to kind of brighten up that area. So they are having a ribbon cutting on Saturday, September 27th, 1:00 to 2:30. And so if you can make it down there, it's great. And maybe I'll see you at the Art Walk down on Calo as well. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And that's it for the slides here, Mr. Erickson. Reminder that the next regular study session will be on Wednesday, September 10th, beginning at 5:00 p.m. in the sixth-floor council conference room with a remote option available by Zoom. And that concludes tonight's regular council business. This meeting is adjourned.